Somebody posted the pictures today.
Oh, there's Justin.
Oh, that's Justin.
He probably can't see us.
Oh.
The problems tonight are just in the most.
Okay.
Well, yeah.
I'll meet you all of a sudden. Is everybody blinking all of a sudden?
No.
Blinking? No, I'm not blinking.
I went back. I'm good.
I don't know, sleep is back there messing with it.
Just hand them to Erica. They'll fix themselves.
You're on.
I'm back.
Took my foot off.
No, because what I usually do is I put my foot on it to raise up.
And it goes to take my foot off and I let it go. There it goes. All right, it's seven o'clock, so we will get our meeting started. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry about that. It's never happened before in six years on the board. I've never seen it.
I've never seen it in sixteen or fifteen.
All right, so we will start with the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I possibly add something to the reports if you would allow me? I had my SSD meeting last night.
Oh.
Can I add a brief report on the reports?
I believe we can just add that right in, so.
Unless you want to do it next time.
Thanks. Five point oh three. We'll add it. Five point oh three.
I'll leave it brief.
And I'd like to move the minutes out of consent, the minutes from May seventeenth.
Where do those get moved to, Patricia?
Um, where will we move them to? I'd ask Mr. McNeil. Mr. McNeil, where do we move them to? Dr. Brock, where do we move those minutes to if we pulled them out of consent?
I'd put them in school improve, if you want to.
School improvement.
We could put like the last item.
Seven oh four.
Somewhere.
Seven oh four, seven oh four?
Yeah, seven point oh four maybe.
Anything else? What an exciting evening of change. I know.
We don't normally do it, and all of a sudden we're doing it.
Right, exactly. Was something else?
No, no, I was just gonna say something. I was just gonna ask Patricia if there was. Will they go?
Yep.
I'll ask her. No, Jim.
Okay, so with those two things moved, all those in favor, so can I with aye?
Aye.
Raise his hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. We will move on to section three, the best part of the evening, our recognitions.
I want to welcome everyone who's joined us tonight. I'm Travis Brock, Superintendent of the School District, and thanks for joining us as we recognize into the month for this past month. So, uh, thanks for being here, and I'm going to have Dr. Powers come up. She's gonna start. I believe we have someone to recognize from GOC. And then unfortunately, Dr. Bean was at work today, but she's not feeling well, so she messaged me. She's not gonna be here, but Dr. Powers is gonna fill in and read those recognitions. And so, um, when you hear your name called, kind of wait until you hear your name called, and when she calls your name, please come stand up here. She's gonna read the great things that were submitted about you, and then the kids can stay standing because the Board of Education wants to get a picture with you while you're all standing up there, and then we'll, uh, we'll let you go shortly after we get done with recognitions. But without further ado, I'll turn it over to Dr. Powers.
Looks like we have some of the main year students here tonight, so I'm gonna start with Manier, okay? So first up is Charlotte, second grader. Charlotte is consistently kind and looks out for others. She finds ways to share her sweet kindness and include others. Charlotte is creative and helpful. There's Charlotte, second grader. Next up is first grader Michael. When a younger student accidentally knocked over a container full of juices at breakfast, Michael sprang up and helped to pick up the containers and put them back without even being asked. He noticed a problem and jumped to help. There's Michael, first grader. And I think we also have Evan, second grader. I nominate Evan Richardson for Afton Strong Student of the Month. He is respectful, responsible, and ready to learn. Evan has a positive attitude towards school and learning. He sets high standards for himself and works hard to achieve them. Evan has a curious mind and loves to share his thoughts and ideas about topics. Evan is also kind and courteous to adults and peers. He is calm and socially mature for his age. He has been a joy to have as a student. Way to go, Evan. And then we have one main year student that I don't think is here tonight, so Kamari, who's a second grader. I nominate Kamari for Afton Strong Student of the Month. Kamari has such a big heart. She consistently supports other students who need help in class and is a good friend. Caring, peaceful, calm, and hardworking are words to describe Kamari. Kamari also takes pride in her classwork and cares about doing well in school. Way to go, Kamari. And then we have one GOC student to recognize this month, Madison, who's a fifth grader, and Madison's teacher, who was Miss, Mrs. Pierce, said Madison is kind and patient with every student in my class. She works hard each day. She is at school and is always has a positive attitude. She has been a great addition to Afton this year.
I'm gonna have you guys just scoot in a little bit. And then what?
We'll get a bunch of. Yeah.
And once you step there, should feel free to get some pictures, possibly get situated. Erica will also give us pictures for us.
Here, I know you have to bend your neck and around, but then you'll see your name too, just like that, okay? There you go. I was gonna say, that's why I stepped down. Just like that. That's good. All right, Karen, I'm gonna get a couple of pictures and then we'll get out of the way, I promise. All right, guys. Jordan, take one step. That way, there you go. Oh, Justin, yes. I thought you were gonna step right where just where Jordan stepped. Okay, there we go. All right, everyone look right here. You ready? One, two, three. And then paparazzi, it is your turn.
All right, we have one more recognition, and then if you guys want to leave, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting, but I would ask that you stick around for one more recognition. So the, the second recognition we have tonight is really a celebration of some accomplishments across the district. We certainly have some staff members that really help us to achieve this, but Afton is one of just a very few districts that are considered a distinguished district through the Project Lead the Way program. So your students may talk about some of the things they do with science, technology, engineering, and math. And so that's something that starts here at the Earl Chocolate Center, and it continues all the way through seventh grade as something the students regularly engage in, and then starting in eighth grade and continuing in the high school. If kids have interest in, say, engineering, or biomedical science, or computer, uh, computer science, we have pathways that go all the way through twelfth grade. So it's a really great program, and the reason Afton distinguishes itself is because we make sure all kids get to participate. Some districts, it's optional. It might be after school, or it might only be students that are part of a particular program, but we really have prioritized through seventh grade, all students get a chance to do that. We think that helps with creative problem solving. And so we are one of only twenty districts nationally to be recognized this year. Uh, we're one of only five districts that have been recognized four years in a row. So I think it's safe to say we're one of the best districts nationally, and it's because we prioritize all of our students getting involved. Um, in the state of Missouri, we're one of only four districts that has received this award this year, and I believe we're the only district that has received it four years in a row here in Missouri. So I think it's also safe to say we, we're the most celebrated district with this particular program here in Missouri. So we've got a couple individuals that are here tonight that have been very integral with that. Uh, the first individual I wanna, um, call up is Marilyn Allen. She's our Career in College Readiness Director, so Marilyn, have you come on up? And if you wanna stand, stand there. You gotta, you gotta put our students to it. And then, um, at the high school level, where we have our different pathways that kids can take up to four years of coursework, um, kind of accepting on behalf of Afton High School, I'll call Dr. Deanne Myers to come on up. And then at the middle school, all kids participate in sixth and seventh grade, and then in eighth grade, our students can choose to engage in a semester-long elective. So Dr. Jason Buck on behalf of Rogers Middle School. And then at GOC, students in grades three, four, and five participate in our Project Lead the Way program called Launch. So I'll have Dr. Christine Powers come up on behalf of GOC. And then likewise, unfortunately, Dr. Tina Bean couldn't be with us, but we also have this programming in place at Manier. It's also called Launch Program. We're in first and second grade. Our kids engage in this coursework. And like I said, these leaders are very integral with making sure it gets in place, because that's half the battle, is making sure that we allocate time, we allocate resources, we get our staff trained so that they can get our students engaged in this coursework. So there's a lot of teachers behind these, uh, these leaders here. All of our buildings have people that receive a lot of training that might happen over the summer for two straight weeks. There's online modules, and we do have, uh, individuals, especially at the elementary level, that it's a train the trainer model where they can train other classroom teachers. So, uh, it's a really great recognition, and I know our board has been very integral. I know some of our board members that have been here for a while, this, uh, they've gotten to see this go from nothing. We, we didn't have a program all the way to where it is now, and so certainly, um, very, very proud, um, accomplishment for Afton. And, um, with that, with, uh, would be remiss to, to just say one last, um, I guess, congratulations and thank you to Marilyn Allen. Unfortunately, she's retiring, um, and so she's done a, a lot of great work across the district, this being one of those great accomplishments. And, uh, Dr. Buck has some big shoes to fill, and certainly Project Lead the Way is one of those balls we don't want to drop, and we want to keep it going strong. So, uh, with that, uh, thank you, guys. I'll let you go back to your seats. Appreciate it. And with that, that concludes our recognitions tonight, and so, um, I believe we have a backdrop outside. So if you go right around the corner, kind of where the fireplace is, there's a nice little Afton backdrop. So I would encourage you to get some family, or get some pictures as a family, or whoever you might want pictures with before you leave. Uh, that would be, now would be a great time to do that, and like I said, thanks for joining us tonight, and we'll kind of let you get on about your evening, so appreciate it.
All right, then we will move on, after all the excitement, to section four, the consent agenda. And administration recommends nicely move that the board approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And tonight, that includes professional development agreements, four point oh four renewals, and four point oh five dispersments. Does anyone have any questions or changes to make there? All right, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. That takes us to section five, reports, and we will start with Dr. Brock's report.
All right, we got a couple items that I wanted to draw your attention to. Certainly, um, we kind of have an extra week, so it's been like three weeks since we've been together and, uh, school ended, and so, uh, we could have a whole meeting just on what happened between now and the last time we met, but I tried to keep it succinct. Uh, a lot of you were involved with, uh, several items. But one item, uh, right here at the top, I wanted to highlight, um, kind of just, uh, to go along with some of the things that Marilyn Allen has been very integral with. There was an opportunity that many of our staff members, I believe Afton had twenty staff members, that you often wonder, what do teachers do their first week of summer break? They go to professional development, or they go to an externship. And so, uh, we partnered with Melville, their Career in College Readiness Director, and then Marilyn Allen put this opportunity together and, uh, got teachers from across the district at different buildings uh, just to learn about an emerging field and what it takes to kind of be successful, what are the types of employment, and what are the types of skills, more importantly, that they look for with, uh, when they are looking to fill positions. And so, that's, uh, that's certainly an exciting opportunity, and glad, uh, glad our teachers got to take advantage of that. Um, graduation, thanks to our board for, uh, for, uh, making it to graduation, and, uh, definitely a very different, um, ceremony than we've had in the past. And I feel like all things considered, when you think of all the things that could have gone wrong, weather, so on and so forth, a little windy.
Little windy, yeah.
I'll take it. You know, it was just a little bit windy, but I think the, the temperature and everything cooperated, certainly the rain cooperated. And, uh, that was a, a nice event, and thanks to everyone who put in a lot of work for, uh, for that graduation and kind of taking a risk to try something a little bit different. Also, uh, we had our end of the year meeting with our administrative council, and so, uh, we, we did that at Kirkwood Park, a chance to get outside and, uh, and also get some work done around our new strategic plan and M SIP six. And, and so, one of the things, the reason I wanted to highlight this is, uh, I believe one of our parents stopped by. They knew we were gonna be there, 'cause they, they saw the reservation. They work at the park. So they saw Afton School District was there, and they just wanted to stop by and say how much they appreciated our hard work. And so they said our staff did a great job. They couldn't be more happy and more proud, and they just specifically made it a point to stop by and say that to us, and so I thought that was a, a very fitting, uh, uh, thing to happen during, during that gathering, uh, and just, just kind of put a lot of things in perspective. Sometimes you do wonder whether your hard work makes a difference. Do people, are, do people recognize it? Does it really translate? And apparently for, for this particular family, it did, so thanks to all of our staff that made that happen. Um, and then lastly, um, once again, it, it, uh, the, the work continues, the learning continues. Um, one week off, per se, and then we're right back with summer school this week, and so today was our second day. It started on Monday. We've got, uh, as you can see there, about five hundred and twenty-six students, um, K through eight, so that's our summer journey program. And, and approximately two hundred and fifty students at the high school level, nine through twelve, engaging in a number of different courses from kind of some traditional courses at the high school in person, uh, maybe recovering credit, to some enrichment offerings that might be done online, or it might be, uh, so, some courses that we don't typically, uh, offer. And so just a number of things going on kind of at the high school level with, with getting kids opportunities. So, uh, all in all, just shy of eight hundred students, um, K through twelve, that are currently engaged with summer school. So thanks to all of our staff that are, uh, that are making that work, and, um, it's, uh, it's, uh, like I said, uh, exciting time to, you know, you think maybe you power down for the summer, and it's just, just a little bit different, just a little bit different work. But, uh, thanks to the folks that are making those programs work. With that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody have questions or comments about any of that? There's a lot. A lot has happened since we last were together. I'm doing, uh, drop-offs and pickups at the high school, and it kind of just feels like the regular school year. There's just so many people on campus, moving in every direction, um, so it's, it's quite an undertaking that our staff is doing. The buses are running, yes, they are. I saw them this morning when I was out walking. I was like, what? Oh, wait, summer school already? It starts right away. All right, well, then we will go to five point oh two, um, and so this is about our professional learning community. Three of us and Dr. Brock were there on Saturday morning, and I will let whoever, I mean, Patricia, do you wanna share it all about it? I know Bridgette has some things she wanted to share, so.
No, I just, I'm so appreciative of, um, people taking time on a Saturday morning to really grow and, uh, work together across our St. Louis region. Um, we had thirty, thirty-five people that attended that morning, on a Saturday morning. A beautiful Saturday morning at that, and, um, uh, the focus, uh, the beginning focus was on, um, the legislative season and what came out of the legislative season, and how we can be better advocates for our school districts. And so there was a lot of good conversation there, and then, um, we broke up into the small groups around the, the different, um, issue areas like early childhood and career, um, development and those type of things, so it was great, and I'm really pleased that we're doing it, and we've gotten such good feedback, um, and we'll plan another one for the future. And, and I said this to Dr. Brock, and I'm gonna say it again, I just really appreciate that you, um, show up, because I know, I mean, we all work really hard all the time, but you're like, oh, another work thing. For us, it's not a work thing. Um, it's another really important thing that we're doing, but you're just like, oh, another work thing, but you're so engaged and, and so supportive, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, I enjoyed the, as well, and I have to say, Paul Ziegler with Ed Plus is amazing. Like, he just was fantastic, and he just brought everything to a whole new level. It's just really easy to learn from him, and it was just great. But I also have to say, when we did our breakout rooms, I learned about these student representatives that come into the, uh, and be a part of our board, and I think that would be such a great thing to have for us as a board, to learn what they feel. Like, they do like, uh, all kinds of surveys, and they bring them up to us, well, not us yet, but hopefully we can get them here one day. And I just really enjoy learning about what other districts are doing, how much we are similar, but yet not. I mean, there's, we're all going through the same thing, but it was just, it was just a great opportunity. I appreciate it. I appreciate your hard work for putting it together. I know you two were a big part of it, so I appreciate it.
And thanks for, um, for raising that bridge about the student representatives, and it gives me a chance to say, soon I will shoot out a sort of list of things that we could, uh, look at during our board retreat. Um, that was already on the list, so I was so excited that Bridgette had gotten some more information about it, 'cause that's something that I wanna propose that we talk about. But, um, be thinking about anything that you might be hoping is on that list, and then we'll have just kind of a dialogue to make sure we get the most important things for our retreat to discuss. And I think my favorite thing about the morning, um, and every time we get together with that group, is just hearing from all the different districts. So I was only there for part of the morning, 'cause I had a family commitment, but the small group that I got to talk in, talk with, um, was someone from Ladue, someone from Clayton, someone from Berg floor, someone from Fox, and myself. And I mean, how do you even get those people all in a room on a Saturday morning? You couldn't have orchestrated it, but just by doing the event, it draws people from all over, so it's great. Thanks for being there. And, uh, you know, everyone has been part of it at different times, so I know Saturday mornings are tricky, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry I missed it.
No, no, we'll be, we'll be planning again. No worries. All right. Did you have anything you wanted to say about it, Dr. Brock? I'm sorry.
No, no, just, uh, I think, I think the really good topics, I know there's some, uh, topics that kind of resurface every meeting, which I think are very good. And then the, the legislative update was timely, so.
And I think you and Dr. Harden Bartley were the only superintendents there this time.
Yep.
You really represent it. It's great, thank you. All right, then we will move on to section six, Citizen Comments Limited to Agenda Items. I don't.
Did you wanna do the governing council update with Kenny?
Oh, thank you. I forgot about that.
So we'll, we'll, five, yeah, five point oh three, we'll do that.
Five point oh three. I didn't make myself a note. I'm sorry about that.
Well, I said, I'm gonna leave this brief because all the reports were anywhere from thirty to sixty pages long, so. So if you want them, I could send them to you from home.
That's why we send you there. You can do that for us.
Basically, we just went over the parent advisory council update. Every three months, we get an update. And the one thing I took away from it, I guess, uh, a lot of the SSD students, I guess they think their only school is the special school district, and they try to remind the kids that know you belong to, you're an Afton kid, you're a Melville kid, and trying to make them feel like they have a homeschool. So they said that was, that's been kind of a, a thing with the students, make them identify with that. So anyways, that and, um, the partnership agreement update, and, uh, they, it seems they redistrict. So you know, there's twenty-two partnering districts, and they try to keep a hundred and forty thousand to a hundred and forty-six thousand people in whatever districts it might be. Like, Rockwood was, used to be by itself, but now they have, I didn't, I'd lost, left the paper home, but they put another district in with them to keep that number right, and they, now, it didn't change any of the Board of Education members. So the Board of Education members all serve on a district, there's like District one through seven, and, uh, but they moved some of them around just to keep that number right. So if you happen to be looking and wonder why all of a sudden now Clayton's with, uh, I think it's with Parkway, you might, that's why. So, and then they actually, we, uh, we approved their strategic, strategic plan and their CSIP last night. They just updated it, yes, it's done, and we went through their fiscal year twenty-three budget and approved that, and they went through budget adjustments from the twenty-two year, and they also did a, uh, governing council orientation for all the new members on the board, 'cause a bunch of people moved on. I guess they finally got to that retirement age of being on their school board, so they've moved on.
What is that age, Kenny? I haven't heard of it.
I think it's twenty-one years, I don't know. Like, Larry Felton's no longer on it. So, uh, and what I found interesting, the SSD is the tenth largest employer in St. Louis. And they have twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight students in two hundred and eighty-six buildings, which I found. A lot.
That is a lot.
But overall, and the only thing about their budgets, they've been running, for their expenditures, they've been running in a deficit for a while. It seems, I didn't realize they'd been running it before I even took over this spot, so, uh, our, well, the chair, until she, they revoted in a new chairperson last night, 'cause Jennifer Miller decided to step down, but she got on the CFO about fixing it. And so did a few others that had been on the board for a while, so it seems they've been running behind for a bit, and they wanted to fix it. Now, they told them to work on it, and I guess they hadn't, so. And, uh, yes, then, uh, we have a new chairperson on the, uh, Veronica Morrow Reel from Rurview Gardens. She'll be the new chairperson on the governing council. Uh, but she's not listed yet. I guess they haven't gone through all that yet.
Yeah, she's been a part of that for a long time.
Yeah.
Great.
That's it.
I think the, um, 'cause I was, I served in that role too, um, the, the budget is so interesting for a special school district, and the transportation budget for a special school district is enormous. It's ginormous, not even enormous. It is, it's amazing, and, uh, and that's a lot of transportation, and they still have a lot of issues with it, so.
Well, they should financially be in a much better position, because transportation is being funded so much more this year.
That came up too, as well.
That's, that would be helpful.
The only thing they're still fearful of is that, I guess, the bus services, that they still can't get enough bus drivers.
Yeah.
That's still their worrisome spot.
Anybody have any questions?
And like I said, I could review all those reports if you.
I, I would love to.
I think we have a place that you could host those if you want to, or just give us the link.
Yeah, sure.
Give us the link.
In July, when we only have our retreat, we can have some light reading. All right, thank you, Kenny. Now, we will move on to section six, Limited to Agenda Item Comments, which we don't have any, so then we will move on to section seven, School Improvement Items. Mr. McNeil.
All right, seven dot oh one is the Activities Program Evaluation. Chris Kepler, are you gonna come and enlighten us?
Enlighten us. We need at least one Chris at the podium tonight.
That's right.
You have to pay attention to this one.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Nice to see everybody. So the twenty twenty-one school year, um, it really was a return to fans in the stands, live audience. So, the twenty-twenty-one school year, um, it really was a return to fans in the stands, live audiences, um, musical audiences. They brought, we brought dances back again this year as well. So, we saw some re-socialization of our kids this year, which was really a great thing to see, to start, uh, growing our community. Because I really feel like that's how our community grows, is by these live events that people can, the community can come and participate in. Several highlights this year, the marching band performed at several athletic events and contests, uh, for the first time in many years, which that was a big highlight, watching them march onto the field for the first time in a long, long time this year. I know it put goosebumps in a lot of our, uh, administrators that were there watching this take place. Uh, speech and debate participated in several competitions this year as well. And that, that was, uh, uh, came back from a year where we didn't have speech and debates. So, we were able to re-infuse, uh, speech and debate. We had one member who actually placed second in a tournament this year for us as well. Uh, and that was, um, Medina who spoke at graduations, who that was, just so you know. Um, we also, uh, set up a, an, an opportunity for our, our families and students to come. It was kind of a college and college career fair night where we had two colleges come. We had Harris Stowe University and St. Louis University come and talked to our students about recruiting process, what it takes, just all the ins and outs of being recruited for, uh, a scholarship and what it takes for them. So, they, it was, it was well-attended as well for the first year of having that, that event as well. We had several state and individual students advance to state competition, including, uh, HOSA, DECA, choir, band, orchestra. Uh, baseball made it to the state quarterfinals this year, as many of you probably know. Boys volleyball advanced out of their district, uh, this year. Girls tennis, uh, we had two, uh, two girls who went on to doubles in the state tournament. And we actually had a, uh, boy golfer, Sam Bar, make it to the state tournament as well. And he finished right around forty-eighth, so about middle of the pack, which was very good. He had not made it the previous three years, so it was exciting for him to, uh, to make it this year. Uh, we had sports night returned as well this year, where we had to modify those events in, in the previous years. And, um, some of the highlights that we also had was, that, that really kind of touched me was, we had some SSD students who we honored, and they were honorary captains at some of our football games, so they would actually walk out to the center of the field and, and do the coin toss, which is great to see that as well. Our activities committee, committee met in February this year. And we, we talked about several things that we want to work on for next year, including some of the goals we want to do, uh, for next year. One of, some of those are cross-coaching days with our high school and middle school coaches and sponsors was one of them. We are also going to increase opportunities for offering one-time events for students. So, rather than feel like they have to join a club and go to all these events throughout the year, we're gonna offer some one-time events, maybe things like hiking and maybe going down to Tower T, doing some volunteering, maybe just a trip to a mu- museum, and just get some, some opportunities where students don't have to make that big of a commitment, but they can still be involved in some, in some way. So, those are some of the things that we came up with. Also, we're gonna include some district-wide events with some different schools coming to different events at the high school, whether or not it's a play or it's a game, any type of event that we're having at, at the high school. So, those are a couple of things that we look forward to in, uh, including in next year's, uh, goals. Any questions?
I have one.
Yeah.
Uh, since we're coming back to school, things are going back to normal for what the kids are interested in. Uh, do we have enough, uh, sponsors and/or coaches to accommodate the, their wants and needs?
Yes and no, we, there are some activities where we do, we have to go out and recruit. We really have to go out and actively recruit for certain positions. Uh, some of our lower-level positions are a little bit more difficult to fill, but that's where we kind of use our network within the St. Louis area. And, um, a lot of times ADs will send out emails across all the St. Louis County, uh, school district ADs to try and get, maybe they had some recent grads that are interested in, in becoming a coach, and we try to generate some interest that way. But it, it, it depends on the activity a little bit, but, um, we, we have to go out and recruit for some activities, definitely.
Are you, do you think you're getting filled?
We are, yeah.
You talked about the attendance at the beginning, has that, has the attendance been below at the same or above, kind of generally across the board at our events from the past? Have they been slowly building, I'm just kind of curious what the shape of that is.
I think it's slowly building, I think as people get more confidence, as, as the mask mandate was dropped and on some of those inside events, I think people felt more comfortable coming, so you'll start to see more grandparents, grandparents attending games. And, uh, yeah, the, the kids, the, the kids were excited to be back too. We had some very good student crowds at a lot of our activities as well, and we'll try and grow those again this year as well.
Any other questions?
Well, I just had a question on page three. It lists, um, goals based on, um, coaches knowing the following requirements. And then it lists everything that's completed, which totally makes sense for this last year. But I know we have a whole slew of new people and I just wondered, is there just a process so that list gets hit every year by all the new coaches, or?
It does, at the beginning of the season, I'll have a, a, a coaches meeting. And that's where we take care of some of the traditional things that we would need to, uh, for the kids to, for the new coaches to understand. We have something called where we make sure, it's called blue cards, and that's something we make sure a kid does not practice unless their coach receives a blue card. That means we know that those, those students have met and turned in all the proper, uh, documentation that we need for them. And then I'll follow through with, for example, we have a new, uh, volleyball coach this year, a women's volleyball coach. So, I'll sit down with Coach Bird and we'll go through, um, all the expectations that I have for her and her staff. So, I take that time, especially if you have a new coach to the district. I'll take, take the time to sit down with them and go over transportation, what that looks like and what physicals look like and so on.
So, that's just like an ongoing list?
Yeah, I, I, it's ongoing, it's continuation, absolutely.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Um, just a couple of comments, it was exciting to see that we've got more. We have had an increase of students that have been involved and kind of looking back through the, through a couple of years. And then also, I just wanted to say that section five really had, did come out of conversations that the committee had. So, I was very pleased to see that, um, all of that stuff that we talked about and came back and, and chatted about, um, is showing up there. And I think that this idea of some one-time activities to just give people an opportunity to do something and then get engaged is a great idea.
Any other comments or questions? All right, well, the administration recommends, and I assume that the board approved, the activities program evaluation as presented. Was there a second?
Second. Dustin voted already, I don't know if maybe he was seconded.
Dustin was trying to second, but, no, the, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, any abstentions? All right, passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, seven dot oh two, we have policies for first need. Travis, am I pushing this to you or Dr. Dautry, which, which direction?
I'll go ahead and take this, uh, so these were policies that were brought to our attention, um, due to some updates that have been recommended. And, and there were some additions made in regards to leave that staff members are eligible for now, to some new, new categories, if you will, that needed to be added. And then, since this was coming up due to those things, we did go ahead and, and make a couple of other suggestions that, you know, districts have a little bit more latitude to kind of do, um, on their own when it comes to how they structure this policy. So, um, kind of tried to put those in the last two Friday updates about what are some of those things with, uh, professional staff and support staff. And so, with one of them, kind of the, the crux of maybe the most major changes, we've really done a lot of progressive work with, with not having a bunch of different lengths of employment. So, it used to be, we've got, you know, twelve month, we've got nine and a half month, we've got ten month, we've got eleven month. And so, we've really tried to make sure we've, a little bit more succinct in just the, the length of the work contract for employees. That just helps making things easier when you get to policies like this. It's, you're either this or this employee, there's probably not everything in between. And then the other thing that, um, we also tried to do is, especially with our support staff, how do we get them to where they can earn, um, I guess, more annual vacation days quicker? And so, we thought that in addition to it being, I guess, confusing, because we've got a bunch of different lengths of contracts, then the increments of time that it took to get up to, say, ten days of vacation, twenty days of vacation, maybe it, maybe it would be advantageous to get to, say, ten days annual vacation quicker. And so, that was something that we, that we tried to accomplish. So, that, those are kind of some of the major things that I guess I would point out that, that were done. Some additions that I think we need to add because of leave provisions that are now eligible, but then other things, just kind of trying to clean up and, and maybe improve upon.
And just a confirmation, the red, right, or the red print is just informational notices? And then the blue is the actual edits to the policy, right?
Yeah, so, yeah, that, that red was kind of just trying to, to, I guess, draw out what, um, what some of the, you know, what, what were we trying to accomplish? And then when you see the strike-throughs, I think in some instances.
The inserts are blue as well, I bet.
Yeah, there's blue and then, uh, I don't know, in my screen, some of them look almost like purple, I guess, or the complete, complete strikeouts, if it's just completely being struck out with no replacement.
So, any questions on these policies?
I got a couple of questions on the GDVA, GDVDA, yeah. So, on a three-part, so I guess what I want to, um, make sure I understand is, do we not have nine and a half month employees that earn vacation? Or do we not have nine and a half month employees anymore?
We don't have, we don't have nine and a half month employees that earn vacation.
Okay, that's, I was just wondering if I missed something, I didn't think I did. And then the other thing was, uh, I guess, I, I see what you're doing there, trying to get the vacation up a little faster for some of the staff, but I, uh, I'm a little, I guess, disappointed to see that you're taking away like the fifth week for that person that's been here that twenty years. And, uh, is there any way we could leave that in there, you think, for that tenure or that senior staff member that's been here so long?
Yeah, and I, I do want to point out, we're not taking any vacation days away.
Well, this is, I mean, like in the future though, say in a few years, you know, because this year, like the twenty-five days now, that would be if they had already earned it, right?
Yeah, I just want to be clear, because a lot of times that gets thrown around, taking vacation days away. And we're not taking any vacation days away from anyone.
Well, okay, they won't earn a fifth week anymore then, is that correct?
Correct, it'll be capped at twenty.
Okay, so sorry.
But then people who are at twenty-five will keep those twenty-five.
But they'll only keep the twenty-five for like, say, this year, so next year that nobody can earn twenty-five again, or?
If you're at twenty-five, you can always stay at twenty-five.
But, okay, so nobody else though, below that mark will ever get the twenty-five days again?
So, people that have never earned it won't have the chance to earn it.
Okay, that's, okay, so that's where I was going with that, sorry, it was very convoluted, but.
Yeah.
Uh, I just, it'd be nice to see, to keep that fifth week, I guess, if you will, of extra five days for them. You know, for all the future staff people coming up, you know, it's, other than that, I, I get the rest, it's, it's fine. You know, I just, I, myself, I'd like to see that other one stay that way. I don't know how everybody else feels.
I think, I totally see what you're saying, Kenny, and it's, I mean, it's a totally legitimate way to look at it. I do think, though, that people who are coming in now will start getting extra days so much sooner that ultimately, at the end of their employment, we will have paid them for probably more vacation days because they will have been getting those extra days earlier. Is, am I understanding right? So, they won't go for years with so few vacation days, they'll, they'll get more quicker? It was just kind of how I, I think it's just different ways to, to.
Kenny, I think, uh, one of the main reasons that we're looking to reduce that is outside of this, there's not, there's, we don't have staff that are earning at that level anywhere else in the district. And, uh, so we're looking at trying to cap it at twenty for, for everyone. And one of the main reasons for it is for this type of staff member, a lot of them have responsibilities over the summer. And then we get a lot of more senior people who have twenty-five days off during the summer, who are having difficulty accomplishing things during times when they're lucky to take vacation. So, I think trying to be fair and earlier, and as Michelle was mentioning, and also, uh, trying to look out in the best interest of the district and accomplishing the tasks that.
I had a feeling someone would say that, I wasn't sure it'd be you, or, but I, uh, I just, I hate to see somebody who's, are not be able to earn that again, that's all.
And then how long can they accrue? So, could they carry over for a year?
They have eighteen months to use their vacation days, and then it's used or used.
Okay, but, so they got an additional six months after the, okay, so they don't lose, so they can accrue more than twenty days? They can accrue for further, okay.
Right, so there's six.
As long as we're able to do that, I think that's.
Now, can they be bought out on a vacation day?
Uh, vacation days for the majority of, um, let me choose my words carefully, um, for support staff individuals, their vacation days are paid out when they leave the district up to one year, they're kept a year of days that can be paid out.
So, like twenty days if they have twenty?
If they were at twenty.
I was just, I guess what I say, like, say they only took, they were, they were able to get three weeks vacation and only use two that year. And by the end of the year, they could just say, hey, can I get the pay for that five days?
Yeah, we're gonna pay that annually, it's just upon.
If they leave.
Okay, yeah, that one goal, then, I get what you're saying there. Is, is there something on the personal leave, or is it some kind of monetary thing if they don't use a personal leave, right?
Yeah, personal leave, uh, as users lose, um, sick days, get paid out upon retirement. Players who report to the district for more than ten years, that would be fifty dollars per day.
Yeah, all right.
Up to eighty days?
Um, there's different.
There's a lot of. There's a lot of numbers.
There's a lot.
We need a workshop. We're going for simplification.
Yes, simplification, that's why we're doing this.
There are different levels depending on the amount of months that that employer works and how many days they can reckon.
You have a lot of this in your head, I'm quite impressed right now.
I figured some, I figured you knew.
With the people that requesting and, and, you know, where you're talking about that, the, the fifth, I'm, I'm not even gonna try and use the lingo, but we know what we're talking about here. Are we, are we talking about people that we tell can't take vacation and that they're getting stuck with days? Because with the amount of staff we have, and then as you said, having that many, twenty-five days, trying to get through the summer, even with the extra six months, are we telling people they can't take vacation, are people getting stuck?
I would say our, our general practice is not to tell people they can't take vacation. So, my guess is the majority of these people probably use all twenty-five vacations every year.
Okay.
May, may they be told that was not a good week or we need you, possibly, um, but that's not our typical.
Well, that's kind of spelled out in here that that could possibly happen though, so it's not, shouldn't be a surprise.
The, the other thing I'll point out, which doesn't get a lot of fanfare, which, um, we did add two paid holidays. So, Juneteenth, which will be happening this month, has never happened before in the history of Afton. So, that will be an extra one. And then with the additional spring holiday that was built into the calendar, that's an additional day. So, there will be two additional paid days off for twelve-month staff.
All right, well, thanks. Any further questions on this information item?
No, it was a lot of work to make this clean up, so.
All right, seven dot oh three, we have a COVID nineteen update, and then we will get to seven dot oh four, I'm reminding myself, so don't forget.
Oh, good, thank you, you're doing better than me.
So, really, just as we wind the school year down, you know, one thing that I know was really enjoyable for all of us, voting on our return to learn plan on a monthly basis, and so, uh, so that's something that possibly, um, not to say that we won't ever want to kind of look at a plan like that, probably at the beginning of next school year, we'll want to evaluate where we are, what practices do we have in place? And then probably have an understanding whether we vote on it or not, that this is, this is how we're, we're gonna do things. And a- as we now transition into the summer, um, I feel like it's a good time to kind of evaluate what, what are some of the things that, um, we carry forward? And then what are some things that, um, even last summer, you know, we, we didn't handle the summer exactly like we did the school year? And so, this is just kind of summarizing, in general, where, where are we as the state of Missouri with handling, managing, working our way through the pandemic? And, you know, that was kind of put out there April first in regards to kind of referring to an endemic phase, which means it's still there, so, so COVID nineteen is not gone. It just means that we are trying to look at it, um, in, in terms of what's, what's different about it now than maybe back when, two years ago, whenever, whenever COVID started. Um, and then I also put in there, what are some things that the CDC is now transitioning to? So, those community levels of spread, so still very much based upon case counts, um, but now they have kind of like a high, medium, low, and what are some of the recommendations? So, really, I guess, trying to, to get away from the sole focus being on case counts and really more on where is your community? And these are the things that you might consider to do, that you could do, based upon, you know, uh, all the different variables. If, if you're vaccinated, if you're unvaccinated, if you're high risk, if you're not high risk, there's a number of things that you might consider doing. And so, that's something that, um, has been, I guess, an update on our dashboard, is that, you know, in, in the past, over the summer, we haven't, you know, tracked our case counts. We really just kind of went on what is the overarching guidance right now with this community? So, right now, if you look at our dashboard, um, you would see what, what are the recommendations that are, that are out there? And that's really kind of what, what, in boiling this down. And that's really kind of what, what, in boiling this down from the state level to the CDC, to, to where do I think we can, we can head here in Afton is, you know, making sure that people are aware of those recommendations, but not specifically saying, these are the things that are required of all staff members. That's really the, kind of the crux of what, what I see that I think would be a, a window of opportunity for us to try that this summer and then see where we are headed into, into next school year. So with that, and then you can also see, I did put a snapshot of where our dashboard was the very last day of school. So you can see on the last day of school, here's, here's where we were with our, you know, with our data dashboard and, 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 you know, overall, I think we, we rounded out the school year in pretty good shape, but I think that's, that's something that we can look at as we start next school year, where, you know, where will we be? You know, do we, we feel like we need to be doing the same things or are there different things that we feel like need to be in place?
I'm looking forward to the dashboard not being my top visited site. It was at the top of the list. Any other questions or comments on this information item? All right, and then seven dot oh four is revisiting of the May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two meeting minutes.
Yep, there's a couple of edits and I didn't get a chance to review the minutes until today, otherwise I would have reached out before, but on three point zero, I guess, the consent agenda, there's, there's a couple of approvals on here and so I think we had one approval, the administration recommends and I assume that the board approves the consent agenda and then listing those things. There's another resolution about the summit learning as presented separate and then a repeat of the recommendation. So I don't think we voted on summit separately. You made a comment about it, but I think it was part of the consent agenda, correct?
Yes.
So just removing that part. So if we can remove that. And then also, since I was just reading it, we're going to amend it anyway, down on six point oh two, when Bridget Cinnamon left the room for additional staffing changes, it says Bridget Cinnamon left the room while voting. So she wasn't voting.
That's a good count.
So Bridget Cinnamon left the room due to conflict of interest, I guess, would be better to just say something like that. I just like, oh, good for you. So if we can go ahead and change that.
Other than that, they were fine, so. And I think, do, I mean, we probably could have just tabled this and brought it next time because probably we want to look at the amendment, like, probably want to see it get fixed and then make sure that it looks like what you're thinking, right?
I think it's fine.
Without looking at it, you want to vote on it right now?
We can approve it with set stipulations.
Yeah, we can approve it with the changes.
Corrections, yeah, that's unusual.
You feel okay?
Yeah, that should be fine.
They're minor, I mean, it's not really serious content or anything.
I move that we approve the minutes of May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two with the corrections that have been noted.
My second.
All right, any further comments? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody upset about this? Uh, nope. Any abstentions?
Thank you.
A new discussion topic?
What?
Is there the upset discussion?
The upset discussion topic.
Oh, I just, I didn't like seeing the same thing over again. I came into the farm, from the farm.
Let's workshop this.
Let's workshop whether we're adding, is anybody upset about this to our meetings?
I'm mostly behaving myself.
All right, so then we'll move on to section eight, personnel items, Mr. Levinson.
All right, we have eight point oh one with the staffing changes, some resignations and some employee transfers, not to take away from everybody who is important, but I did want to note that we have a district nurse, I believe, is that the title? We are hiring a.
Yeah, so.
To fill Ellen's position.
Correct, it'd be, it'd be filling Ellen's position and so be stationed here and then serve as a district nurse coordinator. So we're fortunate individuals coming to us from filling that job in the Ferguson Flores in the school district, so.
Not that anybody else isn't as important, but that's a, that's a big one for us here, so that's good to see.
For sure.
Uh, did you have anything else you wanted to add on, on those?
No, just continue to chip away at, at filling our positions. We're, we're slowly but surely kind of whittling down our certified positions. We've got two that are still kind of hanging out there at the middle school and then a lot of them, you know, as you see us refresh those postings, a lot of those are kind of recruiting for some of our support positions, staff assistance, things of that nature headed into next school year. So still have a little bit of time, those positions don't start right away, but I feel like we're making good progress on our classroom teachers and our certified positions.
I know we haven't made a motion yet, but I'll go ahead and ask, what's an Apex teacher?
That's kind of how we've rebranded our alternative learning program at the high school. So you'll remember, it used to be called Finish Strong Academy and that's where we have our no option students. And since we've expanded to serving kids that are trying to get ahead or maybe kids that are taking courses for advancement, it's, is it academic personalization and experiential learning? I think that's kind of what Apex stands for if, if, as, as an acronym.
Okay, because there's two approvals in here for Apex.
It's like two hundred and forty students at this point, so.
Okay, and I was just, so how many?
Yeah, and so that's, that's kind of what Lauren Widmer has kind of managed that program and so as that's grown from serving about twenty kids to now serving about two hundred and fifty, the high school had supplemented that with teaching assistants. So there was a teaching assistant that helped and then a lot of times there was a certified teacher that might have a duty period. So they have a planned period, but then they may have another period where they would push in and help. And so really, instead of kind of, I guess, piecemealing a bunch of teachers throughout the day trying to push in and help, we felt like having two certified teachers manage that program, I think the, I think the volume of work is there and so that's, that's, that's what both of those positions are for.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
We're still utilizing the teachers assistants though, if they, if you mean, correct?
Yeah, I would imagine there's, the, the teaching assistants are still going to be available there at the high school and I imagine that, you know, just, just for the purposes of if, if one of those staff members might have to be out, I think the, I think it's probably likely that we may have a teaching assistant that still is connected to that program to help out.
All right. Any other questions? Administration recommends and I assume the approval of the staffing changes as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other questions, comments or concerns or upsetness?
I'm looking at Justin.
I thought Justin might be upset, I didn't know. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, that takes us to section nine, citizen comments, not about agenda items, I don't believe we have any of those tonight either. So that takes us to section ten, board comments. Dustin, did you want to comment or do you want to text any comments or?
He's good.
You're good? Okay, great, then Jordan, how about you?
Yes, it was great seeing, really, we had the younger little kids here for presentation.
Kind of starstruck, a couple of them, they were just staring off into the flash, it was really cool. Appreciate the PLTW work, Marilyn and, and all of our staff and, you know, don't get lost, come back and make sure we're doing it the right way. That's pretty much it, just phenomenal start to the summer. I know two of my kids are in that edgenuity, getting that, I think it's edgenuity, getting their PE credits out of the way in the summertime so they don't have to worry about it and it's gung ho at my house, that's for sure. We were told they had to be twenty-four percent of the way completed and one of them was at five percent, so there was a lot of work going on, but, no, it's great.
A lot of working out.
Was it?
A lot of working out.
Yes, yes, a lot. So phenomenal start to the summer, looking forward to heading into this and meeting up soon.
Sure. No, it was, it was neat to hear about all of the, it, over the last month, I've had an opportunity not just on the board to see some of the things that are going on with some of our students and some of our former students, so it's neat to see the GIS, continuous learning that's going on with our staff. I really enjoyed being able to come up here and see the, the young kids who had gone through like a coding academy through, through the school and that was pretty neat. I was furiously texting my daughter saying, get Elijah hooked up into this thing now.
Never chases him.
Yeah, no, and he's already been doing stuff like that, so it's, that's cool. And then also been able to work with a couple of graduates as a part of my business with our intern program and they're building a virtual reality game right now and they're absolutely, as my senior developer said, they're killing it. So they're doing very well and I really hope that people get to see a chan, get a chance to see Marilyn, thank you for pushing Manny our direction, so that was, he's fantastic, as you said. And so it's just neat to see them growing and so that's a, that's a really neat opportunity. And then Marilyn, I was just kind of, I was sending the PLTW, all the listings that were listed out there, Travis, I was sending them off to a couple of friends of mine that have been asking me about, should I do this PLTW thing in my district? Because I know that you guys are big in it, so I was, I was sending that furiously off, bragging about the district shamelessly in the meeting.
Good use of time.
It was while Patricia was talking about. Just kidding.
Now, she's upset.
She should go next. I have plenty more than nothing about you.
Go ahead and please want to respond, and I do not. I do want to say though that graduation was amazing and it was just, it was delightful and it may be the last opportunity that I have to participate in graduation and I kind of do that. And congratulations to our parents who are board members that had their children graduate, that's super special. So I was glad to be a part of that and as I said before, my favorite days are giving out ice cream and giving out diplomas, it's the best, so I'm just grateful.
Get another ice cream.
Grateful that we get to do that kind of work here. It makes all of this other stuff so rewarding.
Exactly what she said. I love the graduation, I had a blast. There's something coming to life back here, I don't know what we're hearing. It's like a tick, tick, tick. You hear it too? Okay.
Time's almost up, people.
If anything happens to us, we. We're not sure what's ticking.
So make your comment really fast.
I don't know what it is.
Sorry I missed graduation, but I did catch some of it on the live stream and it looked like all of yous had fun giving out diplomas, that was awesome. It is exciting to see how well our district's doing with Project Lead The Way. I mean, it just shows what the, you know, administration, the staff, the teachers, everybody's doing to make this all happen, so it's great. I love that, I love seeing the little kids up here getting their little recognitions. I even enjoy standing up here with the teachers and the principals. It's really the principals, but yeah, it is awesome, I love it. And, yeah, that's it.
Okay, thanks. And we've covered a lot already, I will, I do want to say, I really, the geospatial information system stuff, I, having a husband who works for the federal government, I think making sure that our teachers know how to help our students capitalize on NGA here is really critical, so I was so excited to see the pictures of the participation in that. I already mentioned, but I'll say again, summer school just, it's, it's blowing my mind, I mean, when I think about the number of kids in summer school right now, I think about what summer school was like five years ago when I started on the board, it's something else entirely at this point, just so many kids taking advantage of chance to make up learning or fit in courses that they otherwise, otherwise might not get to take. And I, I know of some other districts that really couldn't even fill their teacher positions this summer and they're not able to accommodate all their kids and I just really appreciate all the work that went into hiring the staff and all the staff who are willing after such a hard year to serve our kids for another month. It, it really doesn't go unappreciated, it's really, it's amazing that we're able to offer that much education to kids in the month of June, I think, so really exciting and I appreciate it and I think that's everything I've got. So on that note, I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session regarding pursuant competitive bidding to section six one zero point zero two one, one, one and personnel six one zero point zero two one, three. Do I have a second?
Starting.
Key, it's a roll call vote, we'll start with Justin. Yeah, it's roll call, so got a yes, is he saying yes?
He lifted his hand and he gave a thumbs up.
Okay, we got it, yep.
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. So we are adjourning at eight oh three.
Marilyn, you stuck it out?
Yeah.
She, she. She's like, these are so fun.
It sounds like water, that's why I went and looked, because it sounds like shooting water, I know.
It was.
I expected to see some, like a sprinkler raining down or something.